At this time, I ask. We're getting some feedback. Better, I'm gonna guess. Yeah, oh, that's much better. Eight two five. Could you put yourself on mute? All right, that's good. How about? Nine eight four. Put yourself on mute.
Pam, you can click on the phone number.
What number were you looking for?
We just.
I think you, I think you got one that was noisy.
Uh, that, yeah. The eight eight two five. And who's eight eight? Who's joining us on eight eight? And who is with us at nine eight four one, please?
That would be Rodney.
Hi Rodney, thank you.
Hornier.
Just mute yourself, of course, and thank you. I appreciate that. At this time, we have a public comment, and I'd like to invite people who are in the audience to please limit your comments to two minutes because we have a very long agenda tonight. Who would like to speak first tonight, and please give your name and address, Beth Arnie?
Beth Arnie, one seven six Bolton Center Road in Bolton, Connecticut.
You have anything you'd like to add tonight?
Well, me, we're on the agenda, yeah, so I, I'll get my.
Very good. I guess that's the reason for we have the rest of the, I see the lineup now, the Farm Commission has joined us. Do we have, would, would you all like to add anything to the conversation during public comment, Gwen?
I, I'm here on a different item, but I would also like to address the item regarding the, the archaeological dig. So would you like me to speak now on that item?
Yes, please, it's public, yes ma'am.
Okay. Um, so I am, um, when you're in thirty eighth of that road, I'm opposed to allowing the archaeological dig as I look at the material that's presented that's in the packet. I think that it could open up the door for people who are, you know, illegitimate treasure seekers to come onto the farm and dig up artifacts. I think it's going to raise visibility in a way that we, that Bolton does not watch raised. I have, I was walking on the farm a few years ago, and I came upon somebody with a metal detector digging a hole right on the farm. And even though those blue signs are up saying this is an archaeological site, there's no, no digging allowed. And I know that Richard Tree has had the same experience. And that's, so that's two, two people right there, the personal experiences of people coming out of the farm looking for artifacts. And letting, letting this group come on is just going to make it more visible that these natural resources, not natural resources, historic artifacts are there. I think that these are important artifacts for Bolton to protect and to decide what to do. I think Bolton should be deciding what to do with those artifacts on its own with, with a plan on its own, and not to just react to, to a proposal. And it just strikes me as odd, is that we know that the farm is one of, last I checked, thirty-two state art, state designated archaeological sites in Connecticut. There's only thirty-two in the whole state of Connecticut. This farm is one of them. I think it's, it's precious, we have here, the artifacts are precious. And I mean, I think about what, what about the, um, the places like Gettysburg or Antietam? I don't think that people are just allowed to say, hey, I'd like to go do an archaeological dig on, on the sites. The artifacts should stay there, and they belong to Bolton. I didn't see a plan either in place on, in the packet to, with what would be done with the artifacts once they've done. I think once they are dug up, they have to be preserved, they're going to deteriorate once they. And there are many other ways. I love the idea of people being knowledgeable about Rocheneau and Bolton's role in the Revolutionary War, but there are many other ways that those students can learn about Rocheneau, including, I know that they, there's, uh, they talked about doing the, uh, re, the imaging above ground. They can do it that way, which doesn't disturb, disturb the artifacts. They can also go to Newport, spend a couple of days there, make, uh, learn about what Rocheneau did in the year before he came to Bolton, then they could come to Bolton, make camp on the, on the site and learn about, um, what happened on this end of the trip. So learning about Rocheneau is a great goal, but this is, this is not the way to do it.
Thank you. That was Gwen Marion. We just had a request from Catherine Kavanaugh, who's taking notes, that we need people to, I guess, come forward so she can be able to hear through the owl, uh, so she can pick up for the notes. Other public comments? You can.
I have one.
Irene Peter, seven thirty-three Linwood Drive.
Thank you, Irene.
On August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, I sent a letter to this board stating that critical race theory is in our Bolton schools. I am very proud of this, and in my letter, I asked what we can do about it. Our country has a civil, uh, nineteen sixty-four, which bans discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. The Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five prohibits racial discrimination in voting. Discrimination based on race is illegal in the United States. I previously spoke to the superintendent of Bolton. She did not admit that CRT is in the schools. She mentioned something about learning about other cultures. Because virtually following the Board of Education meetings, I discovered in their May twelve. That diversity, inclusion, and equity practices are embedded throughout the work in our schools. That is CRT. But I can't believe American citizens want communism, which is what CRT is. I also learned. That there have been several, maybe ten retirements and resignations from our school system. I don't know the reasons why, or whether these positions have been filled. People are moving out of Connecticut and don't always say why. Our children and grandchildren have been through a lot these past two years. Now they are being indoctrinated and also sexualized by non-American teachings. They are the future of this country. Again, I ask, what can we do?
Thank you, Irene. It is the practice of this board not to interact during public comment, it is for the public to be able to address the board. Thank you very much for your comments, your written comments. And if you'd like to leave them with us, that would be fine also. John Toomey?
Hi, I'm John Toomey, forty-five Hebrew Road. I'm here in favor of the archaeological expedition that they're going to have to bring in students not just from this country, but half the students will be from France, and they can explain that later on. I think there's always going to be people that are going to try to do bad things, digging, digging the, um, the signs are up, that's the best we can do, but I think that what the, our state archaeological preserve that's under the, that's guided by our state archaeologists will be able to ensure that everything is, that is taken out of the ground is actually preserved, as opposed to people that come and try to steal things. At least they'll be able to find what those folks left that made America what it is. On the other thing about critical race theory, um, those are some of the things that we taught, were taught in Bolton High School fifteen years ago. We learned that the reason why the Texans wanted to take away from, that's because the Texans wanted to keep playing, and the rest of the people didn't. And as far as, there's so many other things that, as far as diversity and things, uh, the reason for diversity is so that people, the students, don't be opposed to kids because they happen to be black or gay. That wouldn't have been something that I would have appreciated fifty years ago. And now it's, it's more happening, and I don't need to worry about that as much. And we don't need to keep trying to squash people that we don't like down.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to speak this evening for a public comment?
I would. Am I up to that? Rodney?
Yes, sir.
Rod Hornier, for Hannah Farms Road. I was just curious, the, the Diversification Committee had a survey that went out a while ago, and, and I was curious when the results were going to be, and I haven't seen anything available to the public yet. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will be there, that one, I will address that one question, and that is that they, we expect their report in on the, in October, uh, and that is their year anniversary, that is in their, um. I wasn't here for it, so I don't even want to.
That's fine, thank you.
Added a year for them to do their, their work.
Our committee expires in October.
Thank you, is there any other question, Rodney? Thank you.
No, that was all, thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time then, if there are no further comments, we'll move right along, and we'll do a quick approval of minutes, and I will take a motion to accept A, B, and C as one motion. Uh, we have for August second, the regular, we have regular meeting minutes, and we have one of the motions that were made, so that's a, took me a minute to figure that one out, it's been done in two pieces. Is there?
I'll move the adoption, uh, August second, regular meeting, August seventeenth, special meeting, August twenty-fifth, special meeting.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Adam. Any additions or corrections? Irene, none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will take up section four later, at a later time in the meeting, because we have so many people with us as guests. We will move up, uh, because we do have an addition to the appointments. We will move up, then I'm going to move quite a bit forward to, um, considering and possibly acting on the Heritage Farm Master Site Plan. Could I have the chairman come join us at the table? And give us one minute to organize our.
Which one is that?
Six A.
Oh, thank you for the numbers.
Now, you're all more than welcome to stay when we get to budget issue, resignations. Yes ma'am, would you like to make an introductory comment?
I would. Karen Nelson Edwards got the final draft out to all of you last Friday, I think you received it this morning. There is, after reading through the, the draft, there is no information in there that was not presented to you in the presentation that everybody was here and was, um, participated in. So there's no new information in there, in case you have not had a chance to read it cover to cover. Sarah was very inclusive in her presentation back in June. All the dialogue that we had is now part of the report. One of the things that I really want to stress is that, um, the Nelson Edward Report for the Master Site Plan was not, it was done with town staff and permission members, so this is something that Sarah had a lot of input from the town itself. It was not something that she and her team did on her own, so there's, there was a lot of collaboration with all of us. And I think that since we do have the final copy, I would rather spend my time in your busy meeting answering any questions that there are. Beth and I sat down and gave you a financial analysis of the master plan, which is on the screen right now, on, which covers some of the costs and potential. Like you in particular, were interested in the idea of, um, when you would see dollars back, and this, this covers that. So if there are any questions, I'd like to answer them. You were, you were confident that this is a, a well-written, well-presented document that should be accepted, especially considering that there are two grant applications out that directly affect the farm beyond the site, and to have an approved working master site plan for the area, in our opinion, is a necessity.
Let's start with those people on the screen. Mike, air meter, do you have questions?
No, but I haven't had a chance to read the, uh, the information presented about the financing at this point. I'd like to get through all of that before I have any comments on it.
Thank you. Please stand, join us, Beth.
Yeah, Beth Arnie again. Give you a heads up, financial analysis of master plan that's on the screen tracks exactly the phases that are recommended in the master plan, reiterates they, their budget estimates, and then talks specifically to when the town could expect to receive some financial benefit. So I'm, I'm obviously understanding of the fact that it was the beginning of the holiday weekend when you received this, and, um, you haven't had a chance to digest all of it, but it's not a tremendous amount of new information to you. There's nothing new. The, the financial benefit pieces come directly from the colleague interviews, which although I was not here for the presentation, I understand was discussed. So I just didn't want you to think I gave you two pages of, gotta start over and process from the beginning. It's just a reiteration and a quick summary. Broken down.
Thank you.
For a quick view, so that you have your, your questions answered.
Adam?
I do have a couple of questions. About the, um, the phase two expenditures for the first, the big items, so it's the first one, two, five. Was that anticipated that it would all come from LoSIP grant money, or is that something town has to match?
The, I don't know how the LoSIP grant works, but Sarah indicated in her report, this, this is lifted word for word from her report. She indicated that that's where the funding comes from. So I, I don't know the specifics of that, maybe Jim just.
Jim?
Jim, we have to speak to that.
Yeah, can you hear me okay? So not, not all of it would come from the LoSIP. We're hopeful that at least some of the parking would be able to, because part of the idea behind the LoSIP grant is to be able to create an accessible pathway between the connectivity, where the connectivity grant ends at the town hall and State Trooper's Office, uh, to the barn. So we are hopeful that some of those improvements can be covered by the LoSIP grant, but not all of it would be. And I, I don't have a specific breakdown of what those amounts would be.
Is some of the LoSIP eighty twenty match, Jim?
There, there, the match is in-kind services, so the design, the design goes toward our match. There's, there's not a huge match on this particular grant.
Thank you. Other questions? Bob DePietro? Nope, no questions there. Mike Airmeter has his hand up now.
Yeah, just, it's a question for Jim, actually. Jim, uh, if we were to put our LoSIP money, because this is money that we, we get from the state, if we put it towards this project, what project is it not going towards that we have already identified in capital and things like that, or in the master plan?
So there's two, there's two different pots of LoSIP money. There's LoSIP entitlement money, um, and I think we're up to about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in LoSIP entitlement money, and we can choose to spend that on any qualifying project, such as a municipal building or things of that nature. And then this is a particular, you know, the, the grant that Arlene and Beth are alluding to is a LoSIP grant that we applied for, that is specific to, um, the pathway that would potentially go between that point where the connectivity trail ends, and then over to the farm, and then potentially make the connection to the high school. And that, those funds can only be used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
One more?
Those are the funds we've applied for, should they come through, then this part will go, will go forward. That's, that's just part of what we have, what we have had planned up to this point. And, and I'll be candid with you, the eighty-five pages, no, I did not go over them.
A lot of the eighty-five pages, you are familiar, you are familiar. Yeah, you saw a lot of it in the presentation, some of it is part of the business plan, which you're well aware of. There's maybe four or five pages of, of consolidation.
I'm just telling you, I did not, I did not read it yesterday or today.
I'm telling you, when you do read it, you're, I already knew that, I knew that.
There's nothing new that, I mean, so, you know, I do. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I did recall in the past, we, we did ask them for an executive summary, which I don't think we ever got, but.
No.
Is there a summary in the?
Which, which, the only reason why I say that, it's not, not so much for me, but if, if someone is interested in what's in that report, I think it would be, it would be everyone, for us to have that available, so that those people on our website, you know, could slide through eighty-five pages, go over two or three page summary on it.
There wasn't asked for that.
And it, there was an ask for that. Because.
Off the top of my head, I don't have it.
I know you don't, I'm just saying.
I believe, and I, I believe there, there is a summary, but what, it's exactly what you're looking for, that I don't know, that would be a Sarah Nelson question.
Well.
So, and Jim, I, I.
I don't know if it's, if it's within that, have they been paid for all there?
No.
Jim?
Like all of you, I only got that document this morning and did not have time to fully review it, so I don't know that it's part of the document.
Could somebody slide this down a little bit so I can see phase three, four, and five, or whatever?
There you go.
Phase, five hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm sorry, Adam.
Could you bop down to the last section?
There you go.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
So they asked, uh, to the board this evening is, would we act on this this evening? So I would like to know the board's wishes at this time. Adam, do you have a comfort level at, to approve the plan this evening?
Generally, yes, because in, in my view, well, there's two or three components there. The first is that when you create a commission, like the Heritage Farm Commission, and you give them a task, and they spend a lot of time on it with professionals, and they come back with something that represents the considered view of the stakeholder who are most interested in the farm, um, and its future use. Unless you're willing to go do that work over, or delegate somebody in town hall who's paid to do it, then in a community of this size with this, these resources, you should accept their work.
Is there any?
Unless you find something horrible in it, and I don't find anything horrible in it.
Is there anything additional correction you'd like to see?
No, I mean, I did look through it, and I did look at the, the phasing, I think it's ambitious. I think in reality, the first phase and the second phase could probably be done with available resources and would make the town, um, the resource more available to people for use. But I kind of question whether the other phases can be done without some very substantial fundraising on the part of somebody.
We would agree with you, Dan.
You know, and that the town is not going to put that money into it. So to me, it's like, I see phase one as minimal work, just to sort of stabilize the situation. Phase two is something that's sort of low-hanging fruit that might be available from grants, and if we can't finish all of it, okay, it still makes the, the farm more usable.
Exactly.
By the public, and more accessible, and more sort of in people's minds, and what people are willing to devote the next five years to, or the next ten, make the rest of it happen, is wonderful. I just don't, my vote in support of it, or my endorsement of it, is not saying that the town is going to go find this money or spend this money, it's saying that finally, after, I mean, I think we bought this property about the time I moved back into town, fifteen years, twenty years ago, twenty years ago, finally, there is an actual defined plan for this expenditure that we, we committed to so many years ago, and I'm satisfied that it's a good one. I, I don't think it has to be a perfect one to give them the ability to move forward with it, or to give the town some, you know, again, with the reservation and with the statement that if I vote to make this the plan, it's not a vote in the future to spend that money.
That's correct, it's not.
Or, or to go out and commit to spending that money, to ask the town to spend that money, because there are a lot of other priorities. If people really want those things to happen to the next stage three, four, or five, they need to commit their time and effort to do it.
Thank you, Bob Moore?
All in your line of thought, the plan, I think the plan is exceedingly ambitious, also, but it's a good plan. I think it's a realistic plan. The, the one thing that probably is not is the timeframe. And, 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 you know, it really goes down to affordability, like, like anything else in, in our line here. The plan is good, and if you don't have a plan to go forward with, you're, or again, use the old term of we're herding cats again to figure out where we're going.
I thought they had hamster wheel.
So, you know, in, in, in my, in my thought, even though I didn't read it, go through it again, obviously, the, the concept is good, the layout, it's reasonable, and, and it goes really in, into the far distant future. Really, you're looking at where can this end up as its ultimate goal?
Thank you.
How we reach it, I'm not quite done, but close, how we reach it and when we reach is another story. Phase one and two, these are things we're gonna, we're gonna, once we're beyond that, I don't know, because I won't be part of, somebody else will be. So with that, I would, I, I, I would support, uh, moving it forward as it stands.
Mike, Mike Airmeter?
Uh, yes, uh, you know, I, I think Adam said it as eloquently as anybody could, the fact that, uh, you know, we, we have a plan that people have worked hard on, and it's a good plan. I'm a little concerned about some of the assumptions as far as us being a destination for certain things and stuff like that, uh, but as far as the first two sections, absolutely. I think we, uh, as, as he described, the low-hanging fruit, I think they're doable and doable within the resources that we probably have. As far as the long-term plan, while I might not be a hundred percent in favor of what it says, I'm just one person, and I will go along with the commission's recommendation. Uh, I do have some serious concerns about the funding for them in the future, but that'll be for the town to decide as we go forward. As Bob says, it probably won't be me either that makes those decisions, but I think we've got, uh, some very hard work by some good people, and I can support what they've put forward, and we'll see how the town sees, seeks to fund it in the future. I can support what they've put forward, and we'll see how the town see, seeks to fund it in the future.
Thank you. I saved a very special selectman for the last, because he is the one that lives the closest and looks out at that beautiful vista every day. Bob DePietro.
Well, thank you, and I do. I am very much in support of this project. I just would like to mention that our whole plans, they are subject to ongoing revision and change. So down the road, only as a matter, I would expect that we'll see some fine tuning that'll help us move forward in the spirit of it, with what it's all about. And I think that it's very important. I heard with Bob Bora, and as I said, I'm agreeing with it, and Mike. I think we should think of it as a big, big, big plus, because it represents the center of the town, and perhaps very importantly, it has a PR effect for our future as a town. So I'm very much supported with a video that is probably going to be fine tuned as we go along in time.
Thank you, Bob. I'd like to say something very special to the Farm Commission. I know this has been a labor of love. You are volunteers. You have put a lot of effort into this. You have had a exceedingly professional contribution to Sarah. And so I'd like to extend my gratitude, because it's, it means an awful lot to see this amount of work go in. So, having said that, it's very important to me that it doesn't go on a shelf. And that the commission doesn't get bogged down with something. So my ask is, would the commission please consider yearly going back and looking at the master plan? The reason I ask that is because some of you may change, may go off the board, you may get members, and that will bring the master plan back to life, and feel that you can adapt it as you need, and bring it forward to the Board of Selectmen.
Question. Are you talking about the master plan, which you have previously adopted, or the master site plan, which you're adopting tonight?
Both. Because I think they're hand in glove. Uh, the site plan, I think right now is, is a, 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 a living, almost living, working document. Uh, but I don't want it to sit on the shelf somewhere. But I think we also need to educate the next people who are a part of it.
Thirty seconds. So the gentleman landscape designer who worked on this did a master plan very similar to this for former Farm Killmore, and that's happened. He told us, he said, it is going to change. It will, as opportunities come up, grants become available, people often donate services, new ideas come forward from different people in town who want to fund or want to support. It will change, but, but you now have bones, and you can, you can crush the bones. So that, I think you're, you're absolutely on the right track, and that's our obligation, I suppose.
Any final comments, Mr., okay? Any final comments, Mr. Chairman? No, I think everything's been covered. Thank you. Then I will ask for a motion on the table, please.
I move that we accept the.
Bob DePietro?
Bob DePietro's ahead of you.
Sir? Bob DePietro?
I'd move that we accept the proposal as presented.
Thank you. Second? Bob Moore? Any further comments before we go to a vote?
Only to reiterate the motion itself, that a vote to approve or to to support this plan is not a vote to commit the town to any particular expenditure, or to ask the voters to make a particular change.
We probably should include that in the motion.
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to include what you just said, Adam. I'll move that we present the proposal, approve the proposal with that proposal that does not commit the town to long-term funding for the phases beyond one and two.
And I'll, and I'll, uh, go along with your modified, I'll second your modified motion.
Have, any last comments? Then we'll ask for the, uh, a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 There any opposed, any abstentions? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Congratulations. You're more than welcome to stay for as long as you'd like, but we're gonna move on. At this time, at this time, at this time, we're going to, um, move on then to seven D, discuss the state library archaeological digs at the farm, and the possible impacts on the Pejoli lease. Uh, we were able to get a copy of the lease. We were able to get a copy of the map uh, that would be affected, the property that would be affected. Have a problem. So what we have tonight, uh, who, who we have with us tonight, uh, is Christine Pittsley. And Christine, would you like to introduce Sarah also? Yes, ma'am. My gosh, you guys. Sure. Well, we are sort of, uh, in a round, uh, theater in the round.
So I'm Christine Pittsley. I am the Special Projects Director at the Connecticut State Library. And this is my colleague, Dr. Sarah Sportman, who is the State Archaeologist.
We don't have many streetlights. Uh, Mr. DePietro, did you have a comment?
I didn't realize Nick was gone.
Nick?
Yes, he, he's actually retired twice now. First in 2014, and then he came back on as interim State Archaeologist for a short period, and retired again in 2020 when I came on.
Very good. Um, so at this time, um, you've all seen in your pit the proposal that has for this, um, uh, dig using high school students and for the summer of 2023, beginning July tenth. And, um, at, and it was very clearly stated that it was at no cost to the town. Uh, and, uh, it is a very ambitious project with, how many students were you thinking of?
There will be fifteen students from Connecticut and fifteen.
So they're just Connecticut students, not United States students?
And, and students from one particular region of that.
Uh, so that, uh, uh, at this time, uh, one of the items that we need to address is, um, or to think about as we get started on this meeting, is that we have a contract with the Pejoli family to, and it's leased to them. Uh, and it's a significant portion of, of the farm that is included in the lease. Uh, and it is, um, three or least? Two of us, and.
Three. It's like a, it's like. So these are areas in which, um.
I'm, so through twenty twenty-three, December twenty twenty-three, yeah. We have a year and a half left on the lease.
And these are, these are currently hay fields. We harvest it two or three times a year, obviously. In, in any of these areas, we really, really would not, would not like human gopher holes, basically, you know. Not, not to make fun of, I can't like a dig, but.
Sarah's probably heard worse.
But, um, as far as I'm concerned, just to begin with, I, I, those, those would be out of bounds as far as we're just investigating. Yeah, and I know you must have all the maps that we did of, of where the troops were, and they traveled, and this and that. So there's a huge significant areas. Um, and are not those areas. And as you can see, the, that large open area, that open area, if you have a small army moving there, uh, would be scattered throughout that. So one thing. So, I, my opinion is, if, if, if we do move through it, it would be limited to, or exclusive of those shaded areas that we have there.
We know that, um.
And, and, and this is hitting you real quick on that, so these are things you may want to look at, and, and we can come back and, and discuss in the future. So I, I don't mean to just throw this hammer at you right now, but I.
Um, could I pause the meeting, please? We got everybody back? Thank you. Please continue, Bob.
Okay, as I, as I was about to say, this is something that obviously you have just seen. And I, you know, obviously, we're not aware of where you, you perhaps are thinking of going, but, um, I think it would be important if you would look this over, look at what you may, you know, you're thinking of doing it, and see if there's a, and perhaps come back. I, I don't know how quickly you have to have an answer on this, but if you could come back to us and, and well, I haven't, obviously, I'm just one person uh, just speaking. Um, just knowing that these hay fields are there, they are leased at that period of time, and we do not want to dug up.
They are not ours to allow you to dig them up as they are leased.
Yeah, so, even, you know. Anyhow, so if that's a pretty big, pretty big area there, uh, if you were to examine what, what you might want to do.
Um, uh, would you like to address it?
Yes, I would say, first of all, um, previous work has been done back in the nineties to, um, identify the location of the encampment.
Yeah.
And that, um, what we would be ideally doing would be returning to those areas to do another survey um, with metal detectors to kind of refine an area using the combination of the old data and the new, to look for a small area to target with students. Um, you know, any work that we did in the survey phase would be minimally invasive into the ground, and we always fill things back in immediately, so it wouldn't be full of gopher holes. Things would be filled in, you know, as we finished.
Just poking.
No, I know, but, I mean, just to be clear, because I think it is a thing that people worry about. We really don't leave giant holes wherever we go, or very, you know, concerned about returning the ground surface for safety and things like that. Um, you know, if I, I would say that it probably wouldn't work unless we can go to the areas where the previous work has identified the encampment.
So the previous work that was done was done when it was held in private hands.
Yeah.
Since then, the town has, this is for others' benefit. Uh, it is now in, uh, the town's purchase, and that is the reason these people are before us this evening is to get that permission. Uh, Adam, do you have a question?
I mean, you're seeing these red shaded areas on the, on the map that's projected on the screen. Are, those are within the, the leased area, or?
Those are the leased.
Those are the.
Yes, and I believe that's where a lot of the, uh, dig, uh, was prior. But I'm going back, of course, twenty years ago, so I apologize not.
Maybe we should ask the archaeologist now. Are those the areas that you're primarily interested in investigating?
I believe that they were, the areas that we're interested in investigating.
So unless they need to be defined to the point where you can get an arrangement with the leaseholder, and he's willing to accept it, which is not anything we can force him to do. He's got contractual lease rights.
And you know, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, I'm a big.
Man, I wish it were, because I would like to see this.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to do something that's inconsistent with the lease that the town is obligated.
Uh, we have, uh, Mike Aramida with his hand, are you done, Adam? Uh, Mike Aramida. Michael?
Yep, I just unmute, unmute myself. A couple of quick questions about the, the dig as they were discussing. Uh, you know, these fields have been plowed probably several times in the last couple of hundred years. So you're going to be down a significant depth looking for artifacts, I would assume. Are you looking to use power equipment, hand shovels, rakes, little hoes and brushes? What type of equipment are you talking about using in this area? Uh, and, and to, to get an answer to Gwen's question, uh, if we do come up, or if you do come up with artifacts, who owns them? Where do they go? Who's, who's responsible for them, and how will they be cared for?
Sure, I can address those. Um, the excavations that we would propose would all be done by hand. It would only be shovel, trowel, brush. Um, you know, they're not very deep. We never go down more than about, you know, three or three feet probably at the maximum. That's all done with hand excavation. Um, you know, we wouldn't be able to really complete a huge amount of work in a couple of weeks with students that are novices. Um, so it would be a small-scale excavation. Um, the idea would be, you know, to use the previous work and to do an additional survey this fall to kind of target an area where we might have, um, a high likelihood of encountering archaeological deposits for the students to work in. Um, but it would be a relatively small area as well. So, um, you know, I can't imagine an area of more than um, maybe like the size of that stage. That would be the entirety of the area that we would, would work in. So one hope that we had would be perhaps if there was, um, agricultural activities going on at the time, that we could just work off a small area and the people wander around it. I don't know if, um, that would be feasible for everybody, but it would be a possibility from our end. It doesn't need to be a large area.
So one of the things I'd just like to share is that this, this is not under an annual crop. It's on our, under a perennial crop that it takes years to restore back, back to its uh, usefulness, uh, as being the, the crop that it is. So thank you. Uh, and now continue on, um.
Just the, uh, part about the.
Oh, I paused. Hang on, Michael. Yes, ma'am.
Um, just, I wanted to also address the, the concerns about any materials that came through. Um, I tried to outline that in the little archaeological plan that we attached at the back of the proposal, but, um, you know, the artifacts would theoretically belong to Bolton, because that's the way it works. Um, they would be cared for. They would be, you know, processed, washed, curated at the University of Connecticut. Their metal artifacts are likely what will mostly be recovering, because it is a battlefield site. Um, those require conservation. They've been, you know, discussing just in a broader scale for this project, uh, opportunities for that. We think we can get funding for the state to help conserve those artifacts, so they will last in perpetuity. Um, and the goal would be to work with the town in Bolton, establish long-term curation, and hopefully, an educational exhibit in the town, you know, that brings together the work that was done in the past and currently, um, so that the town would have that for, um, its own public education and community engagement. Uh, and that's something that my office can work with the town to do if, if the interest is there, pull that together.
Thank you. Uh, Michael, was that the, the end, that to the question that you're asked?
Uh, yeah, it does, and, and, and it, it's, it's a group of people who are not just people coming on the, the property. This is the state art, you know, state library and things. So, yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
All right, can I just ask Bob DePietro, uh, would you like to ask a question at this point?
I would. Has there been any uh, thought about admitting informally between the leaseholder and maybe uh, Dr. Sportman?
Thank you, thank you, Bob. I, I didn't call the Pejolis, and they are here this evening in the room, which you can't see, and I will ask them to come forward in a few minutes. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Nope, Adam?
Just wanted you to comment on the um, concerns expressed by Ms. Marion. Um, I assume that you've been involved in other digs, and then on public property, this is public property. It's not, uh, it's unpatrolled in any way. It's not fenced. Anybody can go there and often do, people walk there. They walk their dogs there. They, you know, they're there all the time. Um, and there's nobody, although it is within the stone's throw of the state trooper's office, it's not likely that he's going to take effect, or they're going to take interest if somebody's out there with a metal detector. What experience do you have about the aftermath of a dig? I mean, if it does get out on the internet that there's stuff there, it's probably already, frankly, on the internet. Frankly, I don't know why people wouldn't be aware of it. The kind of people who would be searching for those things probably already know. The kind of people who would be searching for those things probably already know, but what could? What's likely to happen?
What I would say is that, you know, as you said, metal detectors know that this site is here, right, they've known for a long time, it was. Metal detected extensively long before the past project, twenty five years ago. And I think that, you know, that's a thing that's very difficult to regulate anywhere. But I do think that most of the, you know, really dedicated metal detectors are also very skilled historians, they know where to find these sites, they know how to find these sites. I don't think you necessarily were bringing it to the attention of people who didn't know that it was already there. I will say that as this is one of the few, one of the. About forty archaeological preserves that we have here in the state of Connecticut, it was, it is accorded the highest level of protection that's possible in the state for an archaeological site. It is one of the forty places in the state where if you are there without a permit. You can be arrested, you can face fines and prison time for disturbing this site, and there aren't very many, you know, sites that are. Accorded that protection.
Does your office provide any kind of? Signage or. You know, protection of that kind to notify people of that, because even a sign that went up on the property. That would say this is a state archaeological site, and if you dig on it without a permit, you're going to be arrested. That would deter all this, almost all the sort of casual people.
Yeah, I mean, are there not signs?
I don't think there are.
The Farm Commission.
I haven't seen them.
He doesn't say he'll be arrested.
I think it ought to say he'll be arrested. Where the site.
Yeah, and that's something we can discuss with the State of Spark Preservation Office, they're responsible for the signs. We have in general across the state found that they do serve as a fairly good deterrent. The other thing I would say is that, and to address another one of the concerns that you raised. Is that this won't just be some people digging up a site, we've pulled together a team of some of the. Most experienced archaeologists in the state, including Dr. Tubman Brad, who's one of the foremost battlefield. Documented battlefields, the Pequot War, King Philip's Warren is currently working on the. Ridgefield Battle for the Revolutionary War under the National Park Service Battlefield Protection Program. And he's going to work with us, he's donating his time. And one of the things that he does and what our office is trying to do over the years. Is to work with metal detectors, to bring them into research projects. And get people invested in, you know, all the stages of a research project where you're not just taking artifacts from the ground and bringing them home. But you're finding them, helping to analyze them, interpret them, and becoming part of a bigger story. Where you work together and kind of get that information out to the public, because for many people. You know, a lot of metal detectors aren't just treasure hunters, they're people who are deeply passionate about history. And in, many people feel that they are preserving history through what they're doing. But it's, if you can channel that in a direction that's more oriented, you know, to public education and getting people involved in projects, that's a very successful way. To kind of mitigate some of the more illicit metal detecting activity. Another thing too is a little bit of. You know, press and public knowledge about a site. Can help to raise the profile enough where more people in the community are invested in it and feel strongly about protecting it. And are more likely to kind of, you know, stop people who are metal detecting or bring that to the attention of the authority. Because people feel more invested in that resource as part of their community, their town and their history. So, you know, I don't have a large staff, I don't have any staff, the State Archaeologists is an office of one.
Welcome to Connecticut.
So we don't have a way to police a protective site, and even if we did, it would be short term anyways. So it does become kind of a community endeavor to kind of protect these resources in each community, because that's basically. You know, what we have available to us as this is done here. But I do think that getting people more interested and engaged in the history and the site can help to raise that profile in a way that will. You know, kind of make everybody invested and more likely to protect it.
So I have just a couple of questions for you, have you reached out to the university and the colleges that have other. Geological, archaeological interests? Is it something you're doing separate from them? Is it something you're co-joining with them? Because I, here's my thought, going back to something that Gwen made, this triggered this thought. Once we do an archaeological dig with high schoolers, what's to say that. Mary Harper in past doesn't work with Yukon, doesn't bring, say, well, you did that last year, this year we want to do X. Because we knew that this was here and that was there from her work twenty five years ago. And I have a, a very big concern that this becomes then, and because it's not a battlefield. It was a campsite, and it's only, and it's not a campsite right down the road, I mean, that is in private hands, so. You know, we're not, we're not unique in this, and it was two days before, two days later. They came through over the course of four days. And had over five thousand troops moving through, and they broke camp at three thirty in the morning, so that's one of the reasons, it's one of the richer archaeological sites. Both are still farms, I'm talking about Hutchinson Road in Andover, both have only had the top six inches of soil pretty much turned over because of the farming activity, it's not like there have been. Roads and houses and other things built on their property, so it makes them very rich in their. Historical nature as they stand now. We do not own any of this, the archaeological pieces, except for the property, the house and the barns. As they stand and what's under the ground currently as a town. The rest of it is still owned by the prior owner. That was found there, and there were. Many items, many items, and they were preserved, so. Putting all that, that bit together, I go back to ask the same question. Have you reached out to the others? So if we did this, do we do it once? So that we don't have repeated requests and that kind of thing?
It's once, and I have talked to some of the other universities, and the thing about archaeology is each university has a. A particular program, Central Connecticut State University, their archaeology program is focused on African diaspora archaeology. So they would have no interest in digging here. And really. Sarah can speak more to this, but the archaeological community in the state's very, very small. So doing this once, any of the players who would be interested in it will be part of it.
So when we were working on the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Route and trying to go through all steps to get it approved. We knew that there was. Family member, seventh generation Rochambeau that lives in the next state. We knew that, that we needed money and they did seven digs, I believe, that there were six farm sites in Connecticut that were still. Desirable to do archaeological digs on. So my question to you is, have you looked at the other six, the other five or six sites to look at those and, and what makes this one the most desirable?
We have looked at Middlebury. And. The problems there is that it's private land, there's no public access, community engagement is a really big part of the digging into history program. And Breakneck Hill Encampment just does not provide for any community engagement. The site is on private property, there's no access point except through the owners' door. So it's really hard for people to come and stop by and see what we're doing. When we, a colleague and I and my intern drove throughout about a month ago. And when we came to Bolton, we realized that this was really a great place to do something like this, because it can engage the community. I've worked with John in the past on a World War One project. So I know what the community is like a little bit, we have all sorts of people come to this event bringing their World War One kind of things in. So thank you for that. So Bolton is really the ideal spot, most of the other sites, the campsites are not. In places that would lead. To this kind of a program, there are a couple of other spots that we can, we can explore. But. Kind of fell in love with, with Bolton and the property, because it's just, it's such a great way to engage the community.
Thank you, and thank you very much, we're going to move on to get others to address the same issue, so we'll come back to you with the, with the, when questions come up.
And if I can just kind of also address a little bit about that site security issue. Because Middlebury was private property, because it is so shielded from view. We had a lot of concerns about site security, which is why I included it here. One of the benefits of this particular site is that it is an archaeological preserve, so as we're talking about this, as we're working with students. And schools across the state talking about what we're going to be doing. Talk about what an archaeological preserve is, and why archaeology is important, and talk about, you know, why. Metal detecting something and finding a button completely removes it from the context of. You know, this button was dropped here by a French soldier because they were camped here. So we have a, we have a real opportunity to educate the public, students. Potential metal detectorists about what we're doing, why they can't go to an archaeological preserve and that there are. Penalties like Sarah talked about. And really just help educate, preserve so much more of our history, even beyond what we're looking to do in Bolton.
Thank you, can I hear from the Farm Commission, please?
After I met with. Christine and. And it's a whole program. Just for state, bringing students over. The combination of French and American students, and they do, they go to Newport and they learn all about, there's a whole program that she can bring to your question. There's a whole educational experience. Personally feel with, with professionals like our state archaeologists. That this is a really. Exciting thing to have happen. As well. If it's managed in a, in a professional way. It has the outcome that the whole. Talking to Christine about the students that have been engaged in her previously. First time she starts. World War One. They're engaging students in history and thinking and lifelong friendships. I have a positive feeling about that thing, and I. Think with the guidance and with the owners knowing what's going on and what's certain and what's not certain. Doesn't sound like a huge area of disturbance. I mean, you know, in terms of what they're losing and what they don't lose. She has some support in this particular.
Can you take a vote on the, this, did the commission, commission vote on? Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to have the. Those that hold the lease, I've asked the Pajoli from the Pajoli farm to please, would you guys come on up to the table and, and join us and, and give us your thoughts on this? Because I think that's a very critical point.
I'm Kyle Pajoli, fifty one, Birchville. It just really won't affect us, to be honest, the weather affects us more than a twenty by twenty area. As long as you mark it off, then maybe a lot of struggle, they're going to be there, we'll try and stay out of your way.
Tell me something about July tenth, and how does that fall into your hanging time?
The mid-June first coming will be off. And have at it. I think by not doing this is closing a huge door of opportunity. This is just opening doors for the whole farm, the town. And it, it won't impact us at all, even if you're in the red areas. Yeah, I noticed there's one area that's not marked red, is that any different from the farm? The rightmost.
Yeah, that's, that's town property, but it's not part of the original. This piece of town?
No, over here, lower which is house.
I don't know, we didn't cover that in.
So you're saying the red areas are desirable?
I'm trying to.
The red areas.
The red areas are farm.
Is what you're farming. Within the lease.
I think this is the area that had been surveyed previously.
Encampment hill.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's ideally where we'd like to explore.
That might be the.
That might be the.
Landscape of the farms, anybody know the landscape of farm?
It's almost identical as it is.
Yeah, it's very close.
Well, no, there were no woods.
So the woods that are way down below.
That's all.
Would that be of any desire?
That was, all that was open.
Well, it was farming, it was, because it was June, around June twenty fourth that they encamped. And it was hang, it was farming, big farming time at that time, they were restricted to the slope and they were unhappy about it, they wanted to actually. Encamp on the flat. So one of the things we know is that what, that they lost some of their things because they were sleeping on a hill. And they broke camp at three thirty in the morning when it was still dark. And they didn't have flashlights and that kind of thing, so a lot of little bits fell apart, fell off, and they were able. To find a number of wonderful items when they did it twenty five years ago. So that's why it's, it's actually the hill part, which is the, where they were.
It can't, it won't affect. The lease, the crop, us being in the way, you know. The only thing that would be desirable. Say you. Like out there, heavy equipment, compacting soil is.
And that is in the, in the contract, that's pretty clear, mentioned in the contract about equipment. Jim, am I correct in remembering or, or the Farm Commission that power equipment is not allowed? Unless it's town power equipment, is that correct? So we've had offers by the land trust to clear the stone walls of the. Overgrowth and the, the stuff to keep them.
Another question, when you do the dig. Is it possible to video it for? Town purposes? You know, so you'd kind of see the digging, see the find, if you do find anything, we can all kind of relive it and enjoy it?
Absolutely, and the thing that we've spoken with, I've been working very closely with Johnny Carolyn, who is the. Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Route Administrator for National Park Service.
That would be a, a nice thing for the town to possess.
And we've been, Johnny and I have actually been talking about trying to do some sort of a documentary about whatever we do next summer, wherever we are.
We also have the Community Voice Channel in our town, for, it covers seven towns.
And would the farm be like when you, when you guys are there doing your work? Restricted to the public, because that would be a huge.
So it would depend on where we are, but we expect, we don't want people in the actual dig, but. But they can come up to the, to the gravel area in the farm. And we, we will have a tent set up. Probably over in the area that community events are now held. Where we'll be cleaning dig, cleaning artifacts, and there will always be at least a shop around and some students over there to talk to people. That want to come see what we're doing.
They will find things that aren't metal?
Yeah, so the idea is, and this would be something that if we didn't go for this, we'd have to coordinate and feel, because the idea would be. Another before the dig, another metal detector survey with the battlefield archaeologists that we're working with. To kind of hone in on an area that might be good for excavations, because when we dig, we want to find more than just. Some musketeles and things like that, we're hoping to find remnants of the camp, like fire pits and things like that. And the best way to do that is to look for concentrations of the artifacts. And then, you know, investigate those locations to see if they're actually helping us pinpoint a place where they camp, where there might be. You know, the remains of a hearth or something like that. You know, I mean, you know, we find the stains from tent posts from six thousand years ago, we should be able to find. You know, the remains of. A camp from a few hundred years ago, I think, if we, if we can do this survey, so one of the things we'd need to do is a preliminary metal detector survey. And the best time would be to coordinate that will be because it works best when the, when the grass is short. So I don't know what the, the.
Well, after, well, after.
Just something to solve. Yeah, just so you know, we have a time and then we can plan and have a defined area that would be better to, to be able to do that preliminary survey.
And telling wouldn't be true at all.
No, I mean, so what we've learned archaeologically is that plowing tends to move artifacts up and down, not this way. So usually you find them very near the location where they were originally deposited. They're just sort of moving up and down in the soil. So if you find a concentration of materials, you're very likely in a spot where people actually were staying historically. So that's, you know, kind of the method that we have for pinpointing an area.
Our historian, Todd, would you like to join us, please?
John Tommy, I'm an involved in town historian. I would be happy to have this whole thing being video recorded through CBC as part of our ongoing Living Hit Bolton, Living History Project that we've been doing for fifteen, almost twenty years. I'll bring it back up, and I think this would be excellent.
Thank you.
And I think, I'm sure it'll stay out a little while. And the cameras are quite something these days, revealing the video thing. And I want to thank you for your perspective. You're welcome.
Thank you. Can I go back to the board members for questions for either the Pejolies or for the Farm Commission or for the, one of the state librarians and archaeologists? Any other further questions? Where's Mike? Mike, Mike Armitage, do you have your hand up?
No, I do.
What? Sorry, Mike.
You're looking at a. I would like, there's two things. One, this is a pretty big deal. So I think it's something that we should allow before we make, I don't think we should make a decision tonight. Because I think we should allow our community for public comment on it. This is a big deal. And I think we should allow folks to comment on this on our website or we can come forward at our next meeting so that, I'm making, whatever decision I make, I'm making it not just on my particular mindset. I'll be fair to everybody. You know, I'm not, I know what's there. I, I know there are things there. My sense of exploration is different. I know you're, I'm looking for, you know, this has been looked at. I'd like to look at something else, look at something different, see if, if in fact, we can find other things and not disrupt things and be not as conspicuous. When you're, when you're working on that hilltop, you're, you're like, you know, you're like a neon light on top of a, of a hilltop. You're very visible exceedingly. That's one of the things that's bothering me. So, and I don't want to be the, you know, the pain in the butt only person here that's kind of going off on this thing. So I really feel that the board should wait for our next meeting. Give the community a chance to comment on this. So it's fair to you and fair to the community to make that decision. And shouldn't be because this old guy here has got issues. It should be what's best. And, and, and this is one of the things, because community, as you said, community involvement is, is important. And we, I've always felt that way myself. And this is, this is one time where, yeah, let's get some comment back. And also maybe you could, if you, if it's not too much on a map like this, maybe suggest the areas where you, where you would like to, where you'd like to go, maybe your primary, maybe your secondary look. So we have something to go by. I appreciate that. Thank you. Pam, there's a hand back there. You can't see.
Hi there.
I have an idea for your public comment. We have the upcoming September 25th event and Christine is going to be present for that. So if Christine and whoever, whoever, who are with you, they're having a table. And they have their information, then they would be present, I'm thinking out loud here, it's just an idea. This would be an opportunity for the town to actually voice their opinion and have question and answers and concerns by people actually can, can do that with.
If you're, if.
Yes.
If you're, if you're, if you're going to have them there anyways, is that what you're saying?
She's been invited.
Well, yeah, I mean, if there's an opportunity to, if you will, sell your prop.
It's also an opportunity for the town.
That's what I mean. And you're, you're, it's the town people, if they have questions or, or concerns, the best thing is when I'm on it. Rather go into a filter.
Thank you. Mike Armitage has his hand up.
A couple of quick, well, a comment first. I, I think it's a great idea to explore and document the history where we have the opportunity to and learn from it. I, I do have a concern and I, maybe you can answer the question. When we got involved with the Historical Society and everything with the barn, it became a big expense because of things having to be period correct and everything. If you find a deposit or many deposits of artifacts on this property, is there a chance that the Historical Society Commission, State Archaeologists could put some prohibitions on our use of this property?
No, no, it's already an archaeological preserve and that comes with a set of rules, you know, that go along with it. There's nothing else that we could do or we want in that regard.
Well, are you, are you familiar with what we just talked about with the Farm Commission and the utilization of the site in the future? Does that, does that work with the rules and things that you have in place right now?
Beth, Beth, how do you answer that?
Yeah, the master plan was created with that in mind, like Sarah Nelson is very experienced. She sits on the trust as an advisor and also Tony Almore, who's an ex-printsite signer. So all of the improvements that are proposed work within the rules of the archaeological restrictions.
Very good. Thank you.
What trust did you mean he said from? Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam?
I just have a question. Do you have a deadline that you need to have an answer?
Can you speak, you have to speak. So Kathy?
Do you have a deadline that you need an answer by? And I imagine these kids in France are wondering whether they're coming to Connecticut.
Well, ideally, the sooner the better so we can start student recruitment. If there's more work than you can imagine to pull something like this off, you know, but we could push till October.
Should have said that.
I don't know that we could push much further than that because we do have to start telling kids what they're actually applying to do. If we were to go to another site or if we were to have them in the central location, doing community service projects along sites along the entire Rochambeau route, you know, we need to be able to tell the kids that. And, you know, we do have to do a significant amount of fundraising before, before mid-January, before the French students book their airline tickets. Thing I have nightmares about, dead French kids showing up and I have nowhere to put.
October 4th is, is our next meeting. So it's not, really not that far. You're talking four weeks.
Jim Rupert, we haven't heard from you on this issue. Would you like to ask questions or address anything, sir? Our town administrator?
I, I think the only question I have that, that remains is, you know, about site restoration. You know, we want to make sure that the site is in usable condition when they're done. And I'm not sure, you know, I, I think it's tremendous that the Pejolies are willing to allow this in the leased area. I'm just wondering if there are specific needs that we need to outline with regard to, to restoration of that area.
Well, that's something that would you please address that over the next month with the, with Jim Rupert? And we'll share it with the Pejolies and we'll work on that, that part. So that when we come back, we'll have the answer to that. I don't want to put the pressure on you tonight. Is, any final, I'm sorry, I didn't go to Bob DiPietro. Do you have anything filed, Bob? Okay.
No. No.
Go ahead, Bob.
I think they, well, they threw very well and their proposals were very well outlined. So usually I agree with Bob Laura, but right now I'm getting, yeah, I'm okay with, if we had a leave right now and had a vote, I knew I would support, I would.
This is a farmer talking. I tell you, farmer to farmer, you got that? Okay, then at this time, I would like to ask if the board has the desire to table this until the next meeting. If your questions have been asked and answered and we'll come back to it to make a decision at the next meeting. Is there an interest in that, Adam?
Well, I would have been prepared to make a decision tonight. All due respect to Bob. But the consensus is that it should be tabled till October. I'm willing to do that.
Thank you, Michael.
I feel like Adam does and Bob DiPietro, I was willing to make a decision tonight also. But I'll go along with waiting till October to make my vote.
Unless it's for to, then I'm voting.
I can make a decision. I think it's not to be in favor of it. That's the way it's going to go because I, I want public input before the decision is made. This is a big deal and it should not be made by, you know, without input from other than a dozen people. I mean, and, but, but these are all vested people. I understand that.
It's a big deal, Bob, but we're only talking about a place about the size of the stage behind you there. We're not talking about digging the whole farm up. It's a very, very isolated thing. So, but anyway, I, I'm willing to wait.
Thank you.
Gwen, Gwen hit it, Gwen hit a, if you will, a, a significant nerve with her comments. So, and I, and I respect that. And I, and I, that's why I feel we should have those comments.
I am in support of, as most of you know, I'm very pro-community involvement. And I think it is important that we hear from others. For some people, this is almost hallowed ground because of its very rich American and Native American history. So I am very sensitive to it. Perhaps it's from my background of working on it when I held another office and the amount of time that I invested in it. So I would, I am in support of asking that you, and thank you for holding it off just one more month so that we get some more input. I am very grateful for your outline. The detail in that was absolutely wonderful. And you're coming tonight and sharing your, your expertise has just been wonderful. Is there any closing comments you'd like to make?
I just have, I have some magazines that I'd like to give you. I only was able to bring six. The digging, the digging of the history program was just awarded what was called the game changer award. It was one of, it was named one of the 20 most innovative programs, history programs in the state of Connecticut. So that's given us some fundraising clout. And I actually think this program could help the strategic plan that the farm, the Heritage Farm Committee has promoted tonight, which I don't know all that much about, but.
They'll get you it tomorrow. All eighty-five will just.
You know, I think, I think some of the fundraising that we do and some of the spotlight that we can bring to this, especially because we're coming up on America's 250. National Park Service would like to make digging in the history one of their presidential programs to get, you know, really some high level visibility to it. And I think that could really help with fundraising. So I just wanted to add that. I'm going to go grab the magazines. Like I said, I have six.
And I would like to ask that you reach out to Eric de Rochambeau in North Kingstown, Rhode Island, and let just let him know what you're, you're planning.
Certainly.
Thank you.
And can I just add one other thing? I just, you know, sorry, just in terms of the broader, you know, impacts of this. As we head, as Christine said, towards America to Connecticut and seeing the renewed interest in the Revolutionary War area. I don't know if you're aware of the discovery in 2019 of burials in Ridgefield. And now that's for an entire Battlefield Protection Grant and new survey of the Ridgefield Battle. So I think that we're kind of approaching a point in Connecticut where, you know, we're really taking another look at the Revolutionary War period and the Rochambeau March and the associated sites are such an important part of that. And in our collective history, not just in Connecticut and within the nation, that, you know, it's really, it's a great way to just bring people together and focus on the history of the area and, you know, kind of spotlight Fulton's role in it, along with some of these other sites.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies. So at this time, we don't, we don't need motion. We will hold this until the next meeting. Let's go come to make a decision. And thank you to you guys for coming and to the, everybody who made the comments tonight. I appreciate what you've done. Thank you very much. It is now eight twenty-six. We're going to take a two-minute recess. Take a two-minute recess.
So Kyle, were you out there fishing tonight? Were you out fishing tonight?
No, it's, it's my sister boyfriend was out there.
Oh, I was wondering. I couldn't tell. He never does that.
He's out there fishing. My son's in the house looking around the window.
Okay. All right.
I get time.
I'll, I'll keep it straight. It's September 25th. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's a Saturday.
It's a Sunday, Sunday from three to six.
All right. Oh, I thought you were speaking personally. I'm saying, no. No, 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 no. I'm looking at you. That's, 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 that's Sunday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday. Whoa, there's some.
It's your choice. All right, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And I would ask the people on the phone, please mute. We have some great feedback coming back. Could I ask the phone people to please mute? Oh, that's, that's better.
We're going to do C now. This is, this is going on here.
At this time, we'll bring forward the item seven C to consider and act on the budget for the farm celebration event for, on September 25th. There has. Uh, there has uh, been the question of the budget and in discussions with uh, Jim Rupert, myself and Arlene on a Zoom meeting, we worked over a budget. Is that number still good that we talked about, the $1,000? Is there any other um, additions or interests that you would like to share?
So that, you know, people who do have concerns, the number of people there for it are aware, they will have a chance to express their, their feelings. Otherwise, it's been coming together, a couple of other um, community groups showing up. And.
So we have a two-hour event from four. It is now uh, going to be from three to six uh, on the twenty-fifth at the farm. On a Sunday, and there is no rain date. And there is no charge. The food truck will be uh, pay as you go.
Any correction?
So since this gentleman is looking to get exposure for his business and uh, is not guaranteed any, any funds, Arlene and I talked about covering the cost of his temporary food permit, but otherwise, there would be no cost for the food truck.
Thank you. Questions, can I?
I have no idea how much that is, the function will increase of, of budget.
We have $1,000 uh, proposed this evening. Are there questions from the board members for Arlene? Where's Michael? No? Very good, then I will ask for a motion then to approve $1,000, and I believe that's from the Founder's Day Fund, is that what we decided, Jim?
Yes, that's accurate, and that requires an, an action by the board.
Yeah, Bob Moore moves.
Bob Moore moves, and I need a second from Bob Di Pietro, Bob and Bob, that, thank you very much. Uh, any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then it passes unanimously, thank you. Poor Kathy on the other end is watching me jump all over the meeting, thank you for being here this evening. Uh, we will go back then, and we'll go back to item number four, appointments and resignations. At this time, uh, we will go for A, we have the um, resignation of our chairman that has uh, worked very hard uh, as chairman, Emily Bradley. I would like to say a very special thank you to her for her effort and congratulate her on her new position uh, that she's uh, taken and we're very happy for her and for the school system. Uh, may I, and then we can continue on through all of them and we can move them all at one time? Is anybody like to say anything about A?
We don't need to.
We don't need to act on any of it.
You don't need to act on resignations, they're effective when filed with.
Once, once they come in, they're done.
Would you like to have, I'm sorry, hang on, uh, but, Mike Aramita?
Yes, uh, I'd like to comment on, on Emily's leaving. Uh, this is a big loss to the community to have her leave. Uh, she is uh, she is somebody that put in a lot of effort to find out what the Board of Education's budget and what our budget were actually all about, so that she could make good decisions on the Board of Finance. And she's going to be a great loss to them because she put in a lot of time and a lot of meetings so that she had a good background of everything that went on. And I, for one, am going to be very sorry to see her leave. And I just wanted to say that because I think she's done an excellent job and went over and above, and she filled the void in the Board of Finance that I identified that I thought was a problem. And, and I'm going to be sorry to see her leave, but I thank her very much for the work she's done.
You're here, yeah.
Here, Madam Chair, as I think I said, directly. Uh, the only bright spot moving Emily Bradley from the Board of Finance is the gain that the children of Bolton, the schoolchildren by getting her as a teacher.
Of mathematics.
Yes.
It, it is the only bright spot.
Yes.
I would, I would definitely concur with that. And um, uh, I would like to uh, tell the board that I will be sending her a personal note from me uh, uh, thanking her for her service because it was a dedication of love. She also brought the Board of Finance through the COVID period and was very instrumental in keeping everyone informed through Zoom and taking us through a very technological tough time, which isn't a small feat unto itself right there. So, the, all right, so we do not need, I was going to look for a motion of gratitude, but we'll just keep going. Uh, we have the resignation of the library page, which is the second one. We had two wonderful ones this year, and this is the second one that's going off to college. A very special thank you to the library that takes on these great young people, trains them. And then we lose them. But we know that going in, and they perform a great service for the library. Now, when we got to number C, the appointments. Uh, we have an addition, there are ten listed here. There is an addition and a correction to corrections uh, that I would like to add. The eleventh, we'll add the addition first, uh, uh, and that is for Matthew Rivers. And he is on the Conservation Commission, and he is up for renewal. Uh, the correction is uh, um, uh, for numbers, item number six, Corinda Hawe on the Senior Citizens Commission renewal. And it's, it's an addition would be that she is the alternate, she's not a full board member.
She should be alternate.
She's, it's an alternate position. And I asked her if she wanted to take the full position, there are two vacancies currently on the Senior Commission. It's a good thing you're in the room.
Matthew Rivers is also an alternate on the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. So we have two additions and corrections. Um, there is, uh, this should bring us up to five now, Kathy, is that right? For the Veterans Commission with the addition of Jim Clark and Greg Carini, is that correct? Gregory Carini? Do you happen to remember off your top of your head?
Uh, I don't, sorry.
I think we're beginning to get to the point where we can hold a meeting next month, and we'll start the Veterans Commission off and running. Uh, Mike Aramita?
Uh, I, I, I think every one of these people deserves a shot at what they want and be reappointed. And I'll make a motion that we approve one through eleven.
Thank you, there is one uh, piece of information to note. The Conservation Commission had been until this vote. Um, finally, one party uh, was sitting on that board. And we now have the situation where two board members have changed their party affiliation. Um, Mr. Peter Van Dyne has gone unaffiliated, and Mr. Rob Parley has gone to the Green Party. So there is more of a, a, a party balance on that particular board, it's not just one party. So that's just for informational purposes. Anything else that, uh, we, you put the motion forward, is that right, Michael?
Yes.
And seconded by Bob Mora for the discussion. All in favor then, say aye.
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 It passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item number five.
Uh, Pam?
Jim?
We, we also have expired terms on the Bolton Lakes Regional Water Pollution Control Authority that Bob brought to our attention.
And?
The agen- the agenda was done already, Bob, when we talked about this.
Okay.
I would ask the board, could we re- reopen um, the agenda to add two more appointments, Jim?
Um, well, we actually have uh, Mr. Hayes expired in 2020. Mr. Mora expired in 2021. Um, my appointment expired in 2021. Then we have a, then we have a vacancy for William, William Roddy, who's moved out of town. That, that term is not yet expired, but there is no individual in that role.
Adam, would you like to address it, please?
I, I would be, uh, if it hasn't been posted on an agenda, adding it to an agenda for purposes of reappointing those people would call into question whether they were validly reappointed and, and that would create a problem that I don't think we ought to create, so I think it ought to be on an agenda posted.
A consensus that we will put it on the October meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine.
Very good, all right.
But then we, hopefully we can have, fill that vacancy and do.
It would effectively be all our seats on the, on the water pollution control thirty, I hate to have them all be.
We're going to, would you like to be on that too, Adam?
I don't, that's not fair, Pam.
After a good amount of response, Madam Chair.
I'm looking at Gwen for this one.
She's hiding behind the chair.
I'm getting the um, the glare, so I'm being, trying to not tease her as much as I have been. Uh, going to number five, the reports and updates, the properties and facilities report. Uh, Bob, do you have anything to report? Jim, do you have anything to report?
Well, we, we did, we did hold a meeting, and we responded to some questions that the Temporary Building Commission had. Um, so that they could move the ball forward with their work on the fire department addition planning. Um, and we also phased in some increases in the cost of cemetery lots.
And the last is that um, um, though it's not really our facility, uh, Bolton Lake has been brought to question on the drawdown. The Friends of Bolton Lakes has met with both Jim and I and Vernon Parks and Rec to come together with a plan for an ask to the DEEP to come up with a better communication system on the drawdown and to work on the other fine points of regulation. So I'll just leave it at that, they will be coming back to us. So if there's nothing further on that, I'll move down to the 2022 budget report. Jim, would you like to address that first?
I'm sorry, I was talking and I was muted, I apologize. And so thank you all, thank you all for your patience with me not being present tonight. Um, unfortunately, I am recovering from a bout with COVID.
We're glad you're with us.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so spend, spending is pretty much in line with where we would expect it to be. The, the only place that, you know, Jill and I had a conversation last week that we're a little, little bit concerned about, and I will address this directly with the registrars is, is worse. We've spent a lot of money in the registrar's line item this year. I know that we increased their budget significantly. Um, and we just want to make sure that, you know, they're on track uh, with their spending throughout the, the balance of the fiscal year. And I know that, you know, s- some of the expense was getting notification out to the public with regard to, with regard to the, uh, to the voting and polling places. Um, and that, that expense is really, is a one-time expense. And I, I haven't had any feedback, negative or positive, about how that went. Um, I can only assume that since I've gotten no feedback and we did get a, a significant uh, turnout that things went okay.
Thank you. Are there questions for Jim? Uh, Mike Aramita?
Yeah, uh, on page six, which is actually uh, forty-one of the sixty-five. Uh, Her- uh, Nachroden Municipal Center Electricity at $1,181, where everyone else is relatively small, is, what do we still have running in that building that's costing us that kind of money?
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning is running in that building for what?
We have, so it's not.
It's for the finance department.
It's the finance, it's the finance department. Uh, we have air conditioning in the, in the cla- in the classrooms that we're using as meeting spaces, and there is air conditioning in the senior center.
All right, we're still using those spaces as meetings, for meetings?
Yep, yep. And the, you know, the other, the other thing that we can't lose sight of is that, you know, that building powers the water pump that supplies water to that entire complex, which includes Nachroden Municipal Center. It includes um, you know, the, the Bolton Center School. It includes the um, um, Town Garage as well as the Parks Building. So, you know, that, that's an item that's a significant draw. And I, I think we had talked about this in the past, you know, the heat's off currently, but unfortunately, you know, we're, we're, we're having to, when the heat is on, we're having to cool some spaces as well because the control on the heat is no longer, um, it doesn't work anymore.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we can't get parks.
Let's, let's get back to the actual agenda um, in order. We're still on the budget report. Are there any questions on the budget report before we skip down to item number C? Anything on the budget report? That's okay. No, no, Bob Di Pietro, you're good? Very good, then we will move on then, because no action is needed, we'll move on to C. Consider an act on the AP and the budget transfers. I think they're pretty self-explanatory, unless there's something in the transfers, Jim, that you wanted to address?
Uh, most of the, most of the transfers, the transfers that were necessary to close out last year, they're all, they're all small amounts for the most part.
Are there any further questions on the AP and the, the transfers?
Nope.
Bob Di Pietro, would you like to make a motion that we approve it?
Who do we approve the AP report?
Thank you, and a second? Mike Aramita seconds it?
Yep.
That.
Including the transfers, right, Bob?
Yeah. No, you don't have to, because we, those are, those are transfers were pre-approved.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, they're under five thousand, so.
Okay, very good. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 It passes unanimously. Report and update on the Trails Committee. Uh, Mary, Gwen Marion meeting with Joe Dillon. Does that mean Gwen is going to speak tonight, or is it Jim, are you going to address it? Because we're blessed to have her still here. Jim?
So, I mean, Pam, if you and I wanted to chat briefly about our Trail Committee meeting, and then Gwen, Gwen has, uh, we gave Gwen permission to meet with Joe Dillon, then she's asked to share the findings of that meeting directly with the board.
Thank you, come up, Gwen. Just so it can be heard on the air.
Okay, so Gwen Marion, thirty-eight years old, about a road. I, I want to give a, just a little bit of background about this property. The property that we're talking about is the hundred-and-fifty-four acre property that runs from behind the post office um, plaza all the way to the Coventry Town Line. And this property was given back to the Town of Bolton by DOT in 2016. And it's a beautiful piece of property, by the way. In 2017, the Town of Bolton and Town of Coventry jointly applied for a grant and received a hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar grant through the recreational trails program um, to do a feasibility report on how to use that property and how Coventry might use their property. And that report was done and a presentation was given to the town in 2019. And after that, uh, the Trails Committee authorized Brent Mayerson and me to go out and scout a trail that was located by the consultants. And when we got out there, we found that that trail was just totally unrealistic. I mean, they, it was clear that they just drew a line on the map by topo lines, and it had nothing to do with the reality of what's out there. Which was fine, because we located a much more interesting trail that took people by the beautiful natural features that are out there. And Brent and I came to the board's selectmen in February of 2020 and gave a presentation to that effect. And we also pointed out that in order to open this property up to the public, we needed parking. And um, the only parking spot that has been identified as being realistic is a, in a gravel area that's right next to Bolton Collision and between Bolton Collision and Munson's Chocolate. Where this was used as a, as a staging area when DOT was working on Route Six. So the area is flat, it's very well drained, it's open, the, our town crew mows it periodically. And it is, it's a, it's a good spot for parking. The problem is that there's a sightline problem when you are leaving the area. If you look to the left, um, Bolton Collision uh, is parking some of their cars in the DOT right of way, and it blocks the six-hundred-foot sightline that's required. Um, so I met out there with Josh Kelly, Joe Dillon, and Lance in January of 2021. And Josh wrote a memo to you, Jim. Josh wrote a memo to you, Jim, when you were on your way into your office suggesting that we speak to Dave Wilson, owner of Bolton Collision, about this situation. And so a little bit after that, Joe Dillon and his team went out and did a survey to actually identify where that six hundred foot sightline was. And so we have that map. Jim recently applied for a Lopecip grant to improve the parking area and that was denied. Now there is a new round of recreational trail program funding coming out. It's nine million dollars. I sit on the Connecticut Greenways Council, so I'm familiar with this program and I know that this money is going to be launched in probably October or November. And in my opinion, applying for funding to improve this parking area just would fit perfectly with with that grant, especially because it would be a continuation of the grant that was that hundred and ten thousand that I mentioned was the same under the same program. So this would be a continuation of a project that was previously funded. The Trails Committee met last October and we all decided, well, the way to solve this problem of the sightline is to shift the access uphill toward Munsons. When I met with Joe Dillon last Tuesday, he said that's not, he doesn't solve the problem because Route Six takes a little bit of a curve as you head towards Munsons. And so you don't gain any visual access if you move it uphill toward Munsons. So the only the only true location to get into that property is where that existing apron is. So the what and and so what I think we need to do is to have an meeting with Dave Wilson and show him the map where Joe Dillon has drawn the six hundred foot sightline. And just talk to Dave about what we can do to come up with a solution whereby he could, I hope, be able to move his cars back away from the road and allow the sightline to be improved. Joe and I looked at, there's a space between the apron and Dave Wilson's northernmost parking area that's on town property and it's and it would be a space. There's room for maybe two or three cars right there. It would take a little bit of grading, maybe some gravel on the base. But that could be a possible solution to offer him a little bit of parking area there for him to move some of his cars. And it also looked like there was room on the northern end of his business. There's he's got a trailer in the back and there's some space back there too. And I know he wants the visibility for for the cars that he's the used cars that he's selling. But I but I believe that there's room for compromise here too, since he is parking those in the DOT right of way. And the DOT at any time could come to him and say, you gotta get those out of there. And we don't want that to happen. He's a he is a great guy, great businessman. Bolton is he's a great. He has a great business and small businesses like that should be supported by the town. But it's we do need to figure out how to get into this into this property. And so what I would like to do is have your permission to call Dave Wilson and set up a meeting with him out at his property to go over exactly what I said, show him Joe Dillon's survey that shows the six hundred foot sightline and then actually just physically look at the cars that he has parked there and say, could you shift this one back, move this one back? What about using this this part of town property here? And come up with a workable solution with him. So that's the background and that's that's my suggestion on what the next step is.
So my ask then is have you is is this an approved driveway by the State Traffic Commission?
They used it for the staging area. So I don't, you know, I don't know what what other uses it's approved for.
So that's that's the chicken in the hen house. That's it was the state DOT and they were using it for their staging area for a project. It was not meant for public. So and that's within their own agency. So they may have gotten a sign off for that. So that would be something for to also to talk to Joe about. Because the State Traffic Commission would have to give the approval what for public access cut off of Route Six, even though it's an existing cut. And so that's a question there. And but my I have a great comfort level when you're talking to Dave first. So he knows what's going on because one of the things we nobody likes is a surprise. And then we he's been surprised a number of times by the DOT and I would when they were doing other projects down there. So I would love to have you talk to him first. But that's just coming from me. Adam, you look like you're about to say something.
No, I agree. I also, you bring up a good point.
You might save him some trouble with the DOT when when you go and apply for the curb cut. Somebody shows the the sightlines and say and then says, oh, but there's a business owner who's
violating.
Fill in the blank.
I mean, we certainly could accommodate them. I'm sure we can. But I think it's it's important us to contact DOT to make sure that we we will be allowed to use that 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 existing.
But I like the good neighbor policy first.
Let them know what we're doing in that should going along with our with our comprehensive thought, it should we should the state allow us to use that driveway? It's going to be going to have to ship and we would be wanting to make some accommodations. Yeah, I think the town, I don't know if you want like Jim to go with you or someone from the town to make it a little more official. And that might might be a better or Joe.
Actually, talk to him.
Kind of give him an idea of what is there, how it might work.
Bob, Peter, had your hands up?
Yep, you're muted, Bob.
If Pam, if you're looking for a motion, I would move that we authorize Gwen to meet with Dave Wilson and pursue the good neighbor policy that you talked about.
Do we? I don't know. We need a motion.
We need a motion.
But thank you, Bob, for that. Hold that thought. We'll do it by consensus then. Mike Armita, do you want to add anything?
So I agree.
This is the place also, I believe, Jim, that we were talking about with the fire department for dry hydrant. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, it's one of the locations we'd like to develop.
So that's one of.
Actually, it'd be very helpful when I talk to DOT. I won't be because it won't be purely recreational.
That's a significant.
And we need to share that with also with Dave Wilson and there's a there's a little bog pond.
Oh, that that.
Down the hill.
It was a former bog. It just dug straight down and deep and never fills in. It just holds.
And Lance once told me that they used to cut peat out of it.
Yeah, it was. It's an old peat bog.
Till nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
What?
I'm not Irish. I don't burn peat.
That's a saying. Some Irish immigrants live in there. Does anyone in this?
Why this goes too far?
May I also have permission to track down the permission for talk to DOT after we have a meeting with Dave?
I think we'd have to go through Jim to do.
Just make it more more of an official.
Ask.
Yeah.
From the town administrator. So yes, with maybe you could co sign it perhaps as.
We can. We can work together, Gwen. I have no problem with that.
And you would like to meet with Dave and Joe, me, correct? It would be good if you were here.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So I'll start trying to I'll start trying to put that meeting together.
Thank you very much. Thank you for staying for the whole meeting.
You're welcome. Great. Thank you for all your good work. I have a lot more. I'm looking to meet you. I know so hoping I'll have to be here too late.
Thank you very much.
Oh, here, Jim. Thank you for letting me look at that.
You're welcome.
We are now on number seven, new business discussed and possibly act unless they unless they Alexandra's request for a solar radar speed sign on Bolton Center Road. She has had a request. I thought she was going to be here this evening. And that was to talk about the issues of traffic in the area in front of her home on Bolton Center Road and that for for those that don't know exactly what it is, it's between the firehouse and the library on the north north side of the road. Where and actually it's one of the properties that will be impacted by the connectivity grant pathway that was to be placed there with careful site sighting and care of the trees involved. So Jim, would you like to address the solar radar speed sign?
But I think it's important, you know, that you you know that our resident troopers have done traffic enforcement along Bolton Center Road at her request. And I believe they've actually used one of the driveways as a location to stage that in doing traffic enforcement. The reports that I received, both from our former resident trooper, Dan Richmond, and our current resident trooper, Jake Messier, are that tra- traffic is not extraordinarily fast through that area. They did give out a handful of warnings, but nobody was traveling at such a rate of speed that they handed out any tickets. I thought one of the questions that would likely be asked this evening when discussing this is what is the cost of a solar speed sign? And then those costs are in the range of four thousand dollars for a solar operated digital pizza.
At the current time, the town owns two of them. Is that correct, Mike? Jim?
The the town has two of those signs that that is accurate.
And they are they are permanent sign. They have one has been moved. But they are areas where the speed was considerable and we had had feedback from the resident state troopers that it was important to place them there. Is there any discussion by members, Mike Armita?
I was just going to recommend that we take one of those for a short period of time and move it over there since they are portable. Well, they're not portable. You need a post to put them on, but they're relatively portable. The idea was that we could move them around town. When we got these things, the idea was we could move them around town to places we thought they might be needed. And
We keep them there for a few months and then move them.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the other places they've been in the locations they're at right now for quite a while. I don't think it would hurt to move one over there for a month or two.
Well, one of the things we need to consider is that there's a ditch right there, a very big ditch. And so there's not an obvious plane to put it on until we get the pathway constructed.
Right, but we could put it on the opposite side of the road or we could put it down a little further. Doesn't have to be right in that location. You know, it's the idea is the this if the concern is the speed there to slow it down on the whole section of road. We could put it up by the the gazebo property or anywhere in there. I don't I don't think it would be a problem.
There is a ditch on on the opposite side of the road as well. They're they're a nice pair. As you as you know, when you fished out that truck last year, Jim, do you want to comment?
No, I mean, I certainly don't don't mind, you know, moving one of the signs in that location for a while. I mean, I think one of the things that happens is that we put these signs out there. They're effective at first. But then they just become part of the landscape, especially when people realize that there's no consequences tied to them making those numbers turn red.
Yep.
And one of the things we know is certain age drivers tend to like to push the limit and see how high they can make that number go. Another town.
Not just as they pass the residency troopers.
Yeah.
That would be really pushing the envelope, I think.
So anyway.
They told me my driving was getting better.
Who we were talking about her?
Okay, very good, guys. Then I is there consensus that we will move it for a temporary amount of time? Yes, Bob Mora, Bob Di Pietro, Mike Armita, we have consensus then please, Jim, to ask that they when we have staff available because we are still short staffed.
I will add that caveat. Thank you. And that does not need a motion. Consider it an act on the basketball supervisor increase in pay. Jim, you want to address where the the glitch was on in that?
Yeah, so, you know, we we used the document that we shared with you guys at the last meeting when we acted on wage increases. And apparently not everything on that document was completely up to date. Stephanie brought to our attention that they had been paying the basketball coordinator, I think it was sixteen dollars an hour. And with the wage increase this year, it would have brought that position to sixteen thirty six an hour. So she has requested that we act on that and make that correction.
I would ask then for unless any further questions?
I'll move. I'll move. They make that correction.
Bob Mora makes the motion and Adam seconds it. Sorry, Bob, you weren't quick enough there, kid. That if no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
All right.
And the motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we did that, 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 guys, we're getting better at this. We did that. COVID nineteen, you probably heard that there is a new vaccine becoming available. So we'll have a further update in October on that. That's all I have to say about that because that's all I got. And my pen just died. Other I told you about the Friends of Bolton Lake. And we'll move on then to administrator's report. Most of you have seen because the late hour, Jim's monthly report. Is there any questions for him? On his report, Jim, I'll save your voice. Unless, Jim, is there any one or two items you want to highlight?
No, I don't think so.
Very good. Then we'll be that where it is. We heard about the Farm Commission on the twenty fifth. Is there anything under other, Jim?
I think we hit everything.
Very good. Then does any board member have anything under other? Then we'll move on. Oh, I would like to say one thing. I did attend the fire department training the other a week ago. And it was one of our very own board members creativity, ingenuity and hard work that put it together. We now have an a trailer that goes behind a pickup truck for the fire department that carries the right size hose to be able to reach in back lot lot properties and to go across the bridge at Mark Anthony so that we do not have to have a tanker truck. It's not as it's not an approved bridge to cross it. At this time, Michael found the trailer, restored the trailer, and I mean restored it beautifully and obtained all the necessary parts that was needed. The fire department pulled off a very incredible drill at the high school where they went around the median and they laid hose and laid hose and laid hose. And then they had a pool. They filled the pool with water and they refilled the tanker. It was quite an elaborate training exercise. And people got experience on personnel safety, hose training, and that found how convenient it was to use that trailer. So I'd like to say a very special thank you to our board member and Fire Department Deputy Chief Mike Armita for all your work. Thank you. So at this time, we'll be moving to executive session. We have two items on executive session regarding cybersecurity and discussing personnel evaluation of the interim administrative officer. Thank you, John Tumi, for staying for the evening.
I'm moving on to the second session and include Jim.
I would like Kathy to be able to put up the cybersecurity report on the screen for those of you who don't who didn't make the meeting in person tonight.
We we hang on just one minute, please. Sorry, John. Thank you. I need a second to the motion to go into executive session.
I made a motion to the executive session to include Jim and Kathy.
For the two items under number.
The two items listed on the agenda regarding cybersecurity and discussion of personal evaluation interim administrative officer.
A second, please. Mike Armita, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.